This is a courtesy announcement that the Planning Commission meeting this evening will begin at 6:15 PM.
Bring on when you.
This is a call to order for the June 27, 2024, meeting of the Santa Clara County Planning Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Good evening, Commissioner Rouser.
Present.
Commissioner Escobar.
Here.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Belzka.
Here.
Chairperson Donahue is absent.
Please stand if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, my name is Mark Rouser and I'll be serving as chairperson for tonight's Planning Commission on behalf of the commission. Welcome to this meeting. At this time, please turn off and mute all electronic devices, including cell phones that may interrupt the meeting. The first item on the agenda is public comment. This item is reserved for persons who wish to address the commission on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The law does not permit commission action or extended discussion of any item not on the agenda except under special circumstances. Members of the public who wish to address the commission on a non-agendized item should request to speak at this time by giving a request to speak form to the deputy clerk if you're in the chambers or by using the raise hand icon if attending virtually. Do we have any cards or any?
We have no speakers in chambers and one moment for hands in the Zoom room. We have no speakers there either.
All right. Item number four, consent calendar. Does anyone wish to make any changes to that? Do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move to accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Commissioner Moore makes a motion. Commissioner Levy, the second. Can we take roll call?
Commissioner Escobar.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Rouser.
I approve.
Vice Chairperson Belzka.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item is public hearing to consider annual report number 23 as required in the 2000 Stanford University General Use Permit documenting compliance with conditions of approval for reporting period September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023. The owner is Stanford University, various zoning, supervisorial district five, file number PLN 99-7165-2024-annual-report. Can you educate us with a Levine Act announcement?
We do not have a Levine Act announcement on this particular item, we do on the next one.
All right. Can we have a staff presentation if there is one?
Thank you Chair Rouser, Lisa McHale, Deputy Director. This is an annual report that comes before the Planning Commission as a requirement under the current GUP, so the general use permit for Stanford. And we have with us today Senior Planner Charu Alawalia who can provide an overview of the annual report for Stanford University. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Charu Alawalia and I'll be providing a brief presentation on the Stanford Annual Report 23. So starting with some background, on December 12, 2000, the County of Santa Clara approved the Stanford University Community Plan, or the SCP, and the general use permit also known as the GUP. The SCP policies along with the GUP conditions provide regulatory framework for all development on Stanford campus. The 2000 GUP provides a cap for academic and academic support building area, student housing units, parking spaces, childcare, and temporary cert space. And as detailed on this slide, the thresholds for all of the approvals are provided. Purpose of the Stanford Annual Report is to document development activity on Stanford campus and monitor compliance with required mitigation measures and conditions of approval. The report is presented to the Stanford Community Resources Group, or the CRG, and Planning Commission every year per the GUP conditions of approval. For Annual Report 23, the reporting period is September 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2023. So the Annual Report tracks compliance with 108 conditions of approval. The focus of this presentation is on academic square footage, housing, and transportation. Details on remaining condition compliance are available in the Annual Report, which is Attachment A in this item's packet. Since the year 2000 up to the current reporting period, the square footage of cumulative building permits approved in Stanford are approximately 1.94 million square feet, as is shown in this diagram. As of August 31st, 2023, GUP square footage remaining for allocation is 9,97,633 square feet. Just a clarification here, square footage is counted against the GUP building area cap in the particular reporting year after building permits are approved. And cumulative building permits include demolition and construction permits. With regard to housing, the total number of campus housing units constructed under the 2000 GUP thus far is 4,428 units. The Cabrillo de la Rose project completed framing inspections for five net new housing units during this reporting period. Thus as illustrated in the figure, a total of 40 housing units remain available under the housing allowance. Further, as of August 31st, 2023, Stanford has made cumulative in lieu affordable housing fee payments totaling approximately $39.35 million. An affordable housing square footage bank has been maintained by the county since the year 2000. This is for demolition or conversion of projects that remove buildings from the allocated GUP square footage. So instead of paying in lieu fees, Stanford has the option to use the banked square footage. For this reporting period, as the active projects are still under construction, no square footage from the square footage bank was used or affordable housing in lieu fee was paid. With regard to traffic monitoring, a baseline traffic count to determine the existing level of commute trips entering the campus during the morning of commute trips entering the campus during the morning peak commute period and leaving the campus during the evening peak commute period was established in the year 2001. The baseline is for the raw traffic volumes adjusted for hospital parking and cutthroat traffic. So for this reporting period, six weeks of data was collected in spring and two weeks of data in fall. The 2023 monitoring report concluded that the adjusted morning AM inbound count was 596 trips lower than the baseline 2001 AM count, and the afternoon PM outbound count was 384 trips below the 2001 PM count. The Stanford University is in compliance with the GUP's no net new trips commute requirement in 2023. Thus, in conclusion, Stanford's 23rd Annual Report demonstrates compliance with the conditions of approval stipulated in the 2000 GUP. And with this, I conclude my presentation and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Moore?
Hi, just a couple of detail things. It's a wonderful report, incredibly thorough. Can't say enough good things about it. On page 84, there, it seems as if the annual report 22, the actual right-hand column of net addition to the GUP building cap is, the number is actually absent. I didn't see it in there. So that was, that would be just for, you know.
Through the chair, Commissioner Moore, if I could just ask for clarification, are you referring to packet page 84?
Packet page 84, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So that's in the PDF version?
Right, I'm looking at the PDF, yes. Yeah.
And it's under fiscal year 2021 to 2022, map number 4243. Are we looking at the same thing?
Right, yeah, yeah. I just, I looked in the previous page and it wasn't in there, on there either. So it was just for, you know, just to have that complete. Everything else is filled in, but, but that particular one. And I mean, I could do the math, but
We can add that.
So that was just one. And then there's just one other, again, it's, it's a detail. But on page 89 of the packet, it's, oh wait, maybe I don't, maybe I have that wrong. There was another number in terms of the housing units. Let me see if I have that. Okay, I'll, I'll stop there because I think I have my page numbers wrong. But there was another thing where the housing units did not add up to 4428, and I'm trying to find that. So, oh, here it is. I guess it's on page packet 88. And let me see if I can find that. Anyway.
Through the chair, in the middle column, under key to map C2, I see 4428. Is that, is that the table? And this is on packet page 88?
Right, right, yeah. So I'm just trying to, and I apologize, I wrote this out for a long, a while ago. Let me just make sure. Oh, yeah. So when I look at that, Appendix C Cumulative Projects, if I add up the figures under the annual units, it doesn't actually add up to 4428.
We can look through the chair. We can look to clarify that.
Okay.
While we, while we walk through the remainder of the process.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff at this time? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak either here or virtually?
Waiting for hands in the Zoom room. And it does not look like we have any speakers. And also, if you could pull the mic closer to you, I'm getting word that it's a little soft on the recording.
All right.
Thank you.
Is this better?
Yes.
And is there a representative from Stanford that wishes to speak or only if?
I do not see a Stanford representative in the Zoom room.
All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Through the chair, I do see them in the audience. Do you wish to speak? Yes?
Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Oh, please do then. I will reopen the public hearing.
Hi Peggy, is this the, okay, great, thank you. All right, good evening. My name is Ramya Subramanian and I'm joined by Diana Odell. We both are part of the Land Use and Environmental Planning Office at Stanford. First, I'd like to thank the county staff for their presentation today, as well as their time and effort in preparation of this annual report. In terms of project highlights in this reporting cycle, a handful of projects that propose improvements to existing athletic facilities received approval. Some of these were the Varsity Tennis Project, which proposes replacement and reconfiguration of tennis courts, and the Softball Stadium Improvements Project, which includes construction of a new stadium building and associated site improvements. These improvements will also assist the university in continuing to meet its gender equity requirements by ensuring equal access to athletic facilities for its male and female students. We're thankful to county planning staff for granting approval for these projects and hope to start construction on these soon, once building permits are approved. Moving on to what's coming down the pipeline, in table six, as shown in figure seven as well, our anticipated projects are a mix of roadway improvement projects along Sarah Street and Jane Stanford Way. Couple temporary surge trailers are also being proposed, and there are two monopine wireless cell towers that are being proposed. And all of these are under planning review right now. Also, a quick heads up that construction has been completed on our LBRE and George Schultz Buildings. We're grateful to our construction project managers and county staff who have helped us get to this finish line. It's a big deal for us. Lastly, would like to share a few highlights on the transportation demand management and sustainability topics. We did see an increase of 35% ridership for the Marguerite this year, and our transportation programs have continued to do well. The university also made steady progress towards meeting its sustainability goals. Finally, I'd like to thank planning commission for its review of the annual report, and we're happy to provide any responses if there are any questions for us.
Thank you.
Do any commissioners have questions for the Stanford? Commissioner Moore?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. I've asked this question before, but you're under 100,000 square feet to go. And so, does Stanford have any plans to pursue a new general use permit in the near future?
Well, in the foreseeable future, we don't have a timing yet on that. We're really glad that the Board of Trustees have chosen a new president who will be starting in August this year. So it'll take some time for him to onboard, but we do expect the timing and the key details of the GUP application to take shape once he's onboarded. And then once a decision is made at that level, and we're ready, we'll definitely share it with the community and work closely with county staff on the timing and those pieces. But at this time, we don't have a timing, you know, yet determined, yeah.
All right, well, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Nope. Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Apologies, we have no additional speakers.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Apologies, we have no additional speakers.
Okay, Commissioners, any discussion or would anyone like to make a motion to accept the report?
I'll go ahead and move to accept the annual report number 23, or the, as required in the 2000 Stanford University General Use Permit.
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Moore has made a motion to accept the report, number 23, and Commissioner Belzka has seconded. Can we have roll call vote?
Commissioner Escobar.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Rouser.
I approve.
Vice Chairperson Belzka.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is public hearing to consider major modification of a concurrent land use application, consisting of a use permit, architectural and site approval, and grading approval to upgrade the Z Best facility's existing municipal solid waste composting process to a covered aerated static pile process to increase throughput of MSW, Municipal Solid Waste. California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, Environmental Impact Report, State Clearinghouse Number 2018102041. The owner is Anchor Road Resource Management Limited. Applicant's John Doyle. And the property address is 980 State Route 25 in Gilroy. Assessor's parcel numbers 841-37-028 and 841-37-029. The zoning is A 40 acres and Supervisorial District 1, file number PLN 17-6498. I'd like to mention, I did have ex parte communication and I visited the site. Is there anyone else that would like to make that announcement?
I did not visit the site, but I did months prior meet with the representative Eric Shatner.
All right.
And before we begin, I do have a Levine Act, a Levine Act announcement for this item. Item number six is subject to the Line Act. Any party or their agents must disclose on the record a contribution of more than $250 to a commissioner, as described on page three of the agenda. Participants who have a financial interest and their agents are requested to make a similar disclosure.
All right, thank you. And we are ready for staff report.
Thank you Chair Rouser. Lisa McHale, Deputy Director. We have before you a Z Best modification to an existing use permit, along with some other permit types under the planning application. This project has been in the process for several years. There were some modifications made to the project along the way, and a considerable amount of coordination across agencies and subject matter experts. We do have with us Emmanuel Ursu, who is the project manager from M Group, which is a consultant team working on behalf of the county, as well as Rob Salisbury, a principal planner with our department, Valerie Negretti overseeing this project as well, senior planner, and then Elizabeth Visser, deputy county counsel, which was counsel for this project. We have a lot of other subject matter experts with us this evening, and Emmanuel will go over that in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Deputy Director. My name is Emmanuel Ursu, and I'll be giving a brief presentation this evening. If you have any questions as I'm going through my presentation, feel free to interrupt. If you want to hold all your questions to the end, that is fine too. So, as was mentioned, this is a request for a major modification to an existing facility that has been in operation since the late 1990s. The project is located just about five miles southeast of Gilroy on State Route 25. It's zoned agricultural large scale, zoned A 40 acre minimum lot size. The project site consists of two parcels with the total parcel area of 157 acres. The existing use is for composting, municipal solid waste, and green waste. And the main objective of the project is to increase the amount of municipal solid waste that can be processed at the facility. There are about 10 objectives that are laid out in the Environmental Impact Report for the project. I'd like to highlight just a few of them. They're all listed here, and they're described in detail in the Environmental Impact Report. I think the primary objective, as I mentioned, was to increase the amount of municipal solid waste that can be composted at the facility and thereby reduce the amount of solid waste that is sent to landfills. That meets the second objective, which is to address state requirements to divert compostable material from, from landfills. Some other objectives, as listed, reduce odors from the facility, to avoid peak hour traffic. So all the new deliveries associated with the increased processing at the facility will occur after hours. And then there are other objectives as listed on this slide. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the facility. It's a large site with a lot of moving parts. This shows the existing layout. We've divided the, the project site into sub areas. Area 1A is along about half of the frontage, highway frontage of the project site. This is where the site access is, up at the far left, top left corner of the project site. Let me see if I can get my pointer working. So the site access is up in this area. The admin building, scale building, offices are in this building. There's a processing building located in this area, and then a screening area and filter area where the compost material is processed. That's Area 1A. Area 1B is, let me get a mouse pad. Area 1B is where the composting takes place. Currently, it's composted in these large bags. It's the CTI process. This area is where the municipal solid waste is composted. Area 1C is where the green waste is composted. And then Area 2 is where the finished compost material is stockpiled. Additives are added to it. Final processing takes place there. And then there are two detention basins. Detention basin number one at the south side of the site, and detention basin number two. It's a smaller detention basin at the south side of Area 2. Area 3, shown in this map, is all flood zone area. The Parajo River and the county line is right in this location. This is State Route 25 along here. This is Bolsa Road that comes down to a T intersection in this location. So, this slide shows the existing and proposed uses in the various sub areas that I just described. I'll briefly go through, going to give you a brief overview, and then we're going to dive into each of the changes in each of the sub areas. So in Area 1A, there's some existing improvements that have been made that will be permitted through this process. There's some additional improvements that will be added. So they're adding parking to accommodate the increase in employment and employees at the site. A water storage tank will be added. It's required for fire suppression at the site. And then there are existing improvements. There's a conveyor belt that's existing that will be permitted. There's a windscreen and a few other improvements that are existing that will be approved through this process. Area 1B is the area where most of, where the municipal solid waste is composted. This area will have a new composting technology installed, process installed. That will allow the processing volumes to increase from 1,500 tons a day to 2,750 tons a day, with peak days going from 2,500 to 3,500, and the number of peak days increasing by five up to 20. Another primary change that's being made in this area is it's being elevated, as it is currently within the 100-year flood level. It is being elevated above the flood plain level. Area 1C is where the green waste composting is taking place. There's really no change happening here. There is a windscreen that goes between Area 1B and 1C that will be installed. In Area 2, at the northern end of that area, the flood storage capacity in Area 3 will be expanded into that area. That will offset much of the decrease in the flood zone associated with the fill in Area 1B. And then the detention basins will have some modifications as well. Detention basin number one will increase in capacity primarily by raising the height of the berms around the detention basin. The other purpose of increasing the detention basin berms is to prevent floodwaters from intruding into that storage water, into that detention basin. And then lastly, the driveway access is proposed to be relocated to the Bolsa Road intersection, or as an option to remain in its current location with some improvements that I will describe. Okay, so Area 1A. The existing improvements are some changes inside of the office admin building. Again, that is this building in this area. The processing building has some additional work that was done inside that will be permitted, and a canopy behind the structure that will be permitted. There's a windscreen that goes from the southwest corner, or excuse me, southeast corner of the processing building over towards Area 2. That windscreen will be permitted. The conveyor belt system runs parallel to that windscreen. And then there are And then there are some electrical upgrades that have been made and that will be made, including undergrounding some of the overhead wires that are on the project site. Parking will be added near the processing building and near the admin building. A water storage tank will be added to the west of the processing building. And then exterior lighting that will be shielded and downcast to prevent spillage from offsite and will be added for the parking area and at the back of the, or the exterior of the admin and processing buildings. So area 1B, this is where the composting of municipal solid waste occurs. The existing CTI composting bags will be removed. Those are the 350-foot long bags, approximately 12 to 14 feet in diameter. So those will be removed. The grade in this entire area will be raised approximately two to five feet to raise the elevation of that area above the 100-year flood level. And then 110 bunkers will be installed and in the next slide will show you pictures of what these look like. 60 of them will be used for the primary composting process and then 50 will be used for a secondary composting process. Drains will be installed to convey stormwater and leachate. That's the stormwater that's been in contact with the municipal solid waste and the compost to divert that water to the storm, to the detention basins. And then the windscreen, which I previously mentioned, between area 1B and 1C will be installed. And then also there'll be some lighting added along the west property line to facilitate nighttime operations in a safe manner. Again, that lighting will be shielded and downcast. So these are the, some pictures of bunkers. They're 30 feet wide, 100 feet deep. The walls between the bunkers are 10 feet tall. There is a system of vents in the floor and the way this system works is the municipal solid waste is deposited in the bunkers up to nine feet in height. Then material that has already been composted is piled on top of the municipal solid waste at a depth of about six inches, so the overall height's about nine and a half feet.
Just kidding. Keep going.
Apologies, there is no time around the presentation.
And then there are probes in there that monitor the temperature and moisture and to maintain the optimal temperature and moisture for the composting to occur. The vents in the floor have fans that are attached to them that draw the air down through the compost pile and then is exhausted through a bed of mulch. I'll show you in the next slide a picture of that. So after the primary composting takes place, that's about a three to four week process, the material is, that's inorganic, that doesn't decompose, is filtered out, is screened out. And then the compost, which is, at this point, is pretty stable. It's mostly composted. It's brought back to a second set of bunkers where they're not covered with finished compost material. It's not necessary to cover it at that point. And that's the extended aerated static pile. It's not, it's not covered. It's just the extended process. So that's the secondary processing. And in that process, air is blown from the bottom of the vents up through the compost pile. So that is kind of the technology that is being used. This process speeds up the composting period from 13 to 15 weeks down to three to four weeks for the primary and a little over two weeks for the secondary. So it's about half the time overall. This is a photo of what the ductwork looks like, that the, draws the air from the vents below the compost piles. That area to, the bermed area to the right of the, on the photo is the biofilter. So the air that's drawn down through the compost pile is then exhausted through at the bottom of this, basically it's a mound of mulch that filters out the odors and helps control the odors and other pollutants that may be coming through. Area two, the primary change in area two is at the north end near highway, State Route 25. In that area, there will be, the flood basin that's in area three will be expanded. So basically they're going to excavate down five to 15 feet, depending on how deep the water table is, to accommodate up to 70 acre, approximately 70 acre feet of floodwater. And that's roughly the amount of decrease in the flood storage capacity that's associated with raising area 1B and some of the other changes on the site above the flood plain. So the idea is to try to balance as closely as possible the floodwater on the site. And then also there's landscaping proposed along the State Route 25 frontage. And as a condition of approval, we are recommending that landscape along the, not just the front of the project site, but also along the sides of the project site be installed to screen view from motorists coming in either direction on State Route 25. Then the detention basins, detention basin number one will increase in capacity to 22.8 million gallons. That will, as I mentioned, will primarily be done by raising the height of the berms of the detention basin. I don't believe they're able to go any deeper again due to the high water table in the area. And then a liner will be installed at the bottom of the detention basin to prevent leachate from intruding into and contaminating the groundwater. And the, the height of the berm around the detention facility will be raised to be two feet above the 100-year flood level to prevent floodwater from overflowing the detention The applicant proposed changing the driveway location from this spot here to a internal roadway or driveway, parallel to State Route 25. That would bring the entrance at the Bolsa Road, this is Bolsa Road intersection and this is State Route 25. There'd be deceleration lanes, acceleration lanes, and then left turn lane into the project site. We reviewed this proposal with Caltrans. We discussed it internally. The environmental team looked at it. If this is implemented, mitigation measure TRA 2A requires that a traffic signal, traffic lights be installed at the intersection. The applicant would be required to pay their fair share of the cost of installing the traffic lights. Caltrans would be responsible for the balance and obviously it would be subject to review and permit approval by Caltrans in compliance with any of Caltrans' permit requirements. The other option is to retain the driveway in its existing location, add acceleration and deceleration lanes, add a left turn lane for, to facilitate left turns into the facility, and then add lighting to eliminate that entrance to improve nighttime safety. So the project is subject to findings as detailed in the Planning Commission staff report and there's the evidence to support all the findings for the general use permit and for the ASA approval. Generally, we find that the project is able to accommodate the increase in the capacity without expanding the development footprint. There's adequate traffic safety measures in place. Water quality is protected and odors are reduced. Fire safety requirements are met, conforms to the general plan requirements and the zoning requirements and the other standards as listed in detail in the staff report. Likewise, the grading findings are detailed in the staff report. In general, these are some bullet points that summarize the findings that are described in the staff report. So this project was subject, is subject to the review under the California Environmental Quality Act. A draft EIR was prepared and circulated for public comment back in January of 2021. We determined at that time that additional analysis is required and there were some project changes that were made. As a result, the draft EIR was amended and a, and recirculated in April of last year. The 60-day public comment period ended, actually I think it was June 20, the slide says April 20 of last year, and six comment letters were submitted. Final draft EIR was released earlier this month. The EIR found five significant and unavoidable environmental impacts associated with the project and 17 mitigation measures that are put in place to mitigate impacts with, associated with the project. The significant unavoidable impacts are associated with nitrous oxide emissions from truck traffic, bio aerosol emissions associated with the composting process, and then compliance with the clean air plan or inconsistency with the clean air plan. Again, that's associated with truck traffic at the site. And then also because of the rural location of the project site, it was not possible to mitigate vehicle mile traveled impacts. So it's above the VMT threshold. A statement of overriding considerations was necessary to approve the project that's attached to the staff report. If the commission members have any questions about those statements of overriding considerations, we'd be happy to answer those. We received, as I said, six comments on the draft EIR. Three of them from public agencies, including Caltrans, California Highway Patrol and Valley Water. And then comments from individuals. Two are, well, one is the applicant's attorney. John Doyle is with the applicant team and Kerry Ocean is also with the applicant team. Excuse me. Dorado Leasing is the neighbor's to the, not, not the applicant's attorney, the neighbor's attorney. I apologize. Their comments are responded to in the final EIR and attached to the EIR for, for your review if you'd like to get into the details. After we had published the staff report, we received comments from, it looks like there's about nine individuals and agencies. Two were, had concerns, one from the attorney representing a neighbor, one from a resident concerned with traffic along State Route 25. And then the other seven letters were all in support of the project, including three from other public agencies, City Santa Clara, City of Gilroy, and City of Morgan Hill. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission certify the final EIR, adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting program, make the required findings, including the statement of overriding considerations based on the findings and evidence in the record. And then also, we recommend that the Planning Commission grant the major modification of the use permit, grading approval and architectural and site approval, subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures of the EIR. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and also want to let the Planning Commission know that we do have the environmental consulting team that I believe are online. Hopefully they're, they're here online and can answer any questions that we may not be able to answer from, from the dais here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions at this point from staff on the presentation? Commissioner Moore?
Yes, just one question. Could you, about the municipal solid waste, I read that it was approximately 70% compostable and I was, could you just in a simple way clarify the difference between that and the green waste?
Sure. And if I don't do this, give this question justice in my answer, I'm sure the applicant can expand on it. So green waste is basically yard clippings, trees, vegetation. And then municipal solid waste is, so just the trash, that household garbage. So it's material that normally would be delivered to the landfill. So prior to delivering the landfill, it is brought to this facility. It is composted. Materials that are inorganic and will not decompose are then sent to the landfill. Roughly 50 to 70% of the material is able to be composted, so we're sending 30 to 50% of what would have otherwise been sent to a landfill. And then the compost material is, is used for, you know, an agricultural and landscaping type of applications.
Yeah, that, that's interesting. Yeah, I just did not realize such a high percentage of municipal solid waste was decomposable.
Yeah, no, it was a surprise to me as well. It was a learning curve for me.
That's why I was confused about it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I had a similar question about that. I've toured, you know, facilities in the past where they have conveyor belt systems where the recyclable material gets pulled off. Bottles, cans, paper, et cetera. So are you saying that everything that's in the trash goes to this facility or is there any type of, anything in advance of that where recyclable materials are pulled out?
So as I understand it, and again, the applicant and their representative could, could expand on this. So you have your recycling cart at home, your, your trash cart and it's what goes in your trash cart is what ends up at this facility.
Right, so there's probably a lot of single-use plastics in there.
Yes.
Probably a tremendous amount of that. And so the, the single-use plastics, the structural integrity of them doesn't get damaged in the heating process of the composts where you end up with various types of toxics?
I do not know.
Through the chair, we may want to redirect that question to the applicant.
Okay.
For the specifics of how the, the operation works.
And maybe, maybe we should, you know, I guess let the public speak a little bit first and come back to that. But, so yeah, then I have some questions about water as well, so I'll, I'll come back to those.
Anybody else? Commissioner Belsky?
Yeah, I just, quick question about the, the approval of the previously built. Can you, can you clarify why, why it was, why it doesn't have approval already if it's already built?
So some of the improvements were constructed without the benefit of a permit and so the applicant has entered into a compliance agreement with the county and part of the condition of approval of the project is that they implement or obtain permits for all the unpermitted features of this project site.
Great, thank you.
I had a couple of questions and then I'll probably have some comments and questions later on. Is this technology used in the Bay Area anywhere else?
I believe there's a facility in Napa that uses this technology, but again, that, the applicant may be better able to answer that question.
And then at some point, I'd like for you or Legal to just respond to the, the last letter that we got regarding the bio aerosol emissions and the bird vector and everything at some point, so. With that, why don't we go ahead and open the public hearing and we'll start with the And we put 10, 10 minutes on the clock.
Yes, and Eric Shainauer is here.
My name is Eric Shainauer and I am a land
My name is Eric Schoenauer, and I am a land use consultant representing Z Best, and I'm joined in the audience by the Z Best management team, and we'll all be available to you to answer your questions, especially the technical questions and processing questions that we just heard. We first want to thank the staff for all of their time and efforts to review this project and for their very lengthy and detailed staff report and their very detailed presentation. I don't want to regurgitate all that for you, so I just want to go over the highlight of the key information about the project, and then we're excited about the Q and A section. So this project is as much about a climate change project as it is a recycling project. Removing organic waste from landfills and preventing the associated release of methane gas is a critical climate change strategy of the state of California, and the existing Z Best composting facility plays a critical role in diverting our community's organic waste away from our local landfills. This permit will allow the facility to add new technology that will shorten the composting process and thus increase the capacity of the existing facility. And this will help our community meet the recycling requirements and climate change goals today and into the future as our population and business activities grow. So the, the Z Best facility is an existing facility. An aerial photograph of the facility as it exists today is on the screen, and it's been open since nineteen ninety-eight, so twenty-six years in operation. The facility in two thousand and three began accepting municipal solid waste along with yard waste and compost, compost those materials from household garbage and commercial garbage collected throughout the county. Z Best is the second largest composter in the state of California and is the largest in terms of the capacity to handle municipal solid waste. Our county and cities within the county cannot achieve the state mandated landfill diversion requirements without facilities like Z Best. As adopted in state legislation, including SB thirteen eighty-three, the state of California requires that local communities divert organic waste, both yard waste and organic trash out of the trash stream, both commercial and residential, from the landfills. A primary objective of this, as we've mentioned, is to reduce the amount of methane gas that is emitted from buried organic waste within, within our landfills. Methane gas is among the worst greenhouse gases in terms of contributing to climate change. So Z Best is a critical facility to achieve this goal. The state has other objectives, though, for statewide, the statewide recycling system. One is to divert waste from landfills in order to preserve landfill capacity, because it is very difficult and very expensive to establish new landfills in our communities, and there are negative environmental impacts to creating new landfills throughout the state. So it is prudent to make our existing landfills last as long as possible. And another goal is to preserve natural resources by recycling and reusing materials. In the case of Z Best, our finished products are compost and mulch, which are beneficial to the environment as soil amendments, water conserving mulch ground cover, erosion control, and bio soil products that are reused throughout the community and in agriculture. The modernization project at Z Best will install new technology, as been mentioned, that will dramatically short the, shorten the composting process from the current approximately fourteen weeks to approximately four to five weeks. And the key benefit to this is that it will allow the facility to process or throughput more compost, two times the amount, within the existing geographic footprint of the facility. This will help our county meet not only today's need but future recycling demands, which are going up not only because population and business activity, but because the state's diversion requirements go up every year that we have to meet. The ultimate goal is a hundred percent, which may never be achievable, we don't know, but the state has a high threshold to try to achieve that. The other key component of, before I go on to that, I wanted to point out, in terms of the primary benefits, whoops, the primary recycling components, I don't know why my, oh, here's, can you see the cursor now? There we go. The, there really are two primary physical changes to the site. You know, the other things with the buildings are fairly minor from a physical perspective, but the main recycling changes, the cursor keeps disappearing, sorry, here we go, or this back corner. So you see these rows of bags. So as staff mentioned, the current method puts the materials in these large bags, and the process happens in a bag primarily. In that corner where you see the bags lined up in the top right corner, that's where we will be installing the concrete bunkers with the piped aeration systems. So that's one primary physical change to the site. The other is the additional stormwater capacity. So we already have stormwater ponds back here, as you can see, those will be altered, and then in the front here is where the new pond will be built. So that's obviously a physical change to, to the site. But that's really the bulk of the physical change that make the project happen. Improving the stormwater collection is a key component to ensuring protection of the Paharo River as well as the surrounding environment. And as staff has indicated, the new stormwater plan takes into account the development of the bunker facility to ensure that all of the water can be properly captured, properly treated. Another key objective is, is to reduce odors and emissions from the composting process. By having this technology, it will allow for aeration of the organic materials, and it will also allow sucking the odor into biofilters and pulling it out of the air so you don't smell it, as well as leachate liquid capture of liquids. So the, the technology we're deploying improves the air environment and reduces the chance of odor impacts. The project, in terms of traffic, will avoid any additional peak hour traffic, and we're going to do that because we've, the project has committed that no additional truck traffic associated with the growth in material will, will come during peak hours to the site. So the primary concern of the community is, Highway twenty-five is a busy route, especially in the morning commute and the afternoon commute. We've agreed to not have our new truck traffic, not existing, but our new truck traffic, not arrive and depart during those hours. And as staff had mentioned, the project will significantly enhance the safety along Highway twenty-five by adding acceleration and deceleration lanes along the highway as well as left turn lanes at the entrance of our facility. And you can see on the slide here, on the bottom left is Highway twenty-five, that's our frontage. Bolsa Road is the road tying in there. So either our entrance will stay where it is, which is just off screen, the bottom right, or it will relocate to Bolsa Road. In either case, we will be adding the deceleration, acceleration lanes, and the left turn lanes to make ingress and egress safer than it is today. And that will be a Caltrans process. We're subject to their review and approval. Next is the creation of jobs. The expanded operations here will add thirty additional jobs to our facility, bringing our grand total employment up to ninety jobs. And lastly, I'll just re-highlight what the staff did in terms of the letters of support from, primarily from the cities, because the reality is, every city in our county cannot meet its state mandated requirements without facilities like ours. And if not here, that waste would have to be shipped many, many miles away for processing. So with that, I'll end the presentation, and as I mentioned, I'm available, as well as our team, to answer your questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does any commissioners have questions? Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, thank you. Just curious, currently, who is providing the municipal solid waste and green waste currently, in terms of municipalities, agriculture, et cetera?
Who, where is the waste coming from?
Yes.
So our company has contracts with municipalities to collect materials. So we collect the materials curbside as well as commercial businesses, and that's the source of the materials.
I was just wondering if there were, you know, particular cities currently? I was just curious which, is Santa Clara, for example, they wrote the letter?
Santa Clara, Sunnyvale.
Okay.
San Jose.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just curious. Thank you.
A large portion of the geographic areas of Santa Clara County.
Okay, thank you.
We collect from.
Commissioner Levy, did you have a question?
Sure, I wanted to continue with the question I had earlier about the process. Maybe you'd like to get the technical expert up here to talk about how the material is received, you know, and then processed, and I'd like to sort of on both ends, how do we get the recyclable material out before it gets to you, besides people who actually often don't recycle at home? And then what happens at the end is some of the material that's surplus reci, you know, diverge recycling instead of just a landfill? So sort of the whole, the process from start to finish?
Yeah, so Greg Ryan here, who's the foremost expert, is going to explain all of that.
Thank you, thank you, Eric. Thank you, Greg.
Okay, yeah, thank you commissioners for having us this evening. So to answer your question, all of the materials, the MSW materials are pre-processed either at our MRF in San Jose. I mentioned we get materials also from the SMART station, which is Sunnyvale Mountain View, as well as materials from City of Santa Clara, City of Palo Alto, and a few others. So the materials, this is your gray can that comes from your house or the dumpster from a restaurant, runs through our MSW processing MRF. So there we pull out all the aluminum, recyclable plastics, cardboard, anything that was missed that should have gone in the blue bin but didn't, we recover that there, and then the remainder goes down to Z Best for the composting process. That includes a lot of wet fiber, food packaging, compostable plastics, and things of that nature.
That was, that was my expectation, is that you had a pre-processing. And then the question concerning any dangers from taking some of that junk, that trash, and then heating it to a fairly high temperature as far as toxins being released?
Yeah, so the composting temperature is about a hundred and forty degrees is kind of the optimal temperature. They can get as high as a hundred and fifty sometimes, but well below any temperatures that's going to volatilize any of the plastics.
Okay. And then, so then the stuff is removed, the non-organic material is removed at the end.
Yeah, it's really kind of a simple concept is, you know, everything goes into the composting process. If it's organic, it breaks down into a soil-like consistency, and then we're able to screen out, sift out those fines, and the larger chunks of plastics and textiles, anything that doesn't break down, then passes through the screen, and that becomes the residual, about thirty percent that goes to the landfill.
And that all goes to landfill, none of that's diverted to recycling?
No, at that point, it's been through the MRF process already, and it's mostly, you know, film plastics, rubber textiles, things that don't have end-use markets.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Commissioner Belska?
Yeah, so some, some of the cities you mentioned actually require separation of food waste with solid waste. Do you collect both, or in that case, do you just collect the food waste?
So cities of Santa Clara and Palo Alto are the, are the good examples there, so those cities, you know, their first foray into compliance with thirteen eighty-three, which is the organics out of the landfill mandate, was to just do the simplest program, which is to have the residents put their food scraps into the green waste cart, co-compost those, that's, that's the simplest solution. But both of those cities kind of analyzed that program after a few years and just saw that we're just not getting a high percentage of the organics into that. So maybe one meal a day at dinner, you're going to scrape your plate into your kitchen pail and dump it in there, but everything else throughout the day is banana peels and snacks is going in the garbage. Also think about your, you know, bathroom tissues, wet paper towels, all those things of that nature that are all, all compostable. So anyway, those cities made the decision to implement MSW processing on top of that program to, to get to the diversion standards, whereas the City of San Jose, you know, went with MSW processing from the outset because they have their loose-on-the-street program, which is, they really like, and they get higher tonnages of yard waste diversion that way, can't contaminate those loose piles with food scraps, so they implemented, we started doing MSW processing for their residential like back in two thousand and eleven and commercial even prior to that in the early two thousands.
You, you mentioned Sunnyvale. Sunnyvale does require separation of food waste from solid waste. What do you do in that situation?
Correct, but again, they still process the gray can at the SMART station in Sunnyvale, and then we get the organic fraction.
Do you get the food waste as well?
Okay, so they have a commercial food scrap program that you're probably referring to?
No, residential.
Okay, so their residential food scraps go into the yard waste cart?
They do not.
No, they don't, right.
They go into a separate cart.
Sorry, so the Sunnyvale clean green yard waste, yes, we get that as well from the SMART station.
But what about the food waste?
So the, the food waste is in the MSW cart, they process that, and we get those, that material as well.
Okay.
Couple of questions. On the traffic, having driven Highway twenty-five, that, that definitely, there are regional issues with that road that, that are very frustrating for both members of our, residents of our county and San Benito County. What percentage of traffic do you think goes northbound versus southbound from your facility? Because a left turn lane into your, your facility from southbound, how often would that even be used?
A left from southbound?
You were, somebody had mentioned a dedicated left turn.
Yeah, so probably seventy-five to eighty percent of our truck traffic is going, you know, exiting this facility is going north to one oh one, and then north or south on one oh one from there. So the, you know, the, a number of trucks that would be coming from the Hollister South Side, turning left in or coming out and turning right would be a small percentage.
Right, okay. And then, are you aware of this technology being used elsewhere in the Bay Area?
So the specific ECS technology, the vendor that we're using is being used in Napa, as Eric indicated, but the, you know, this forced aerated pile system is the, the kind of latest and greatest technology, so it's considered right now the standard for a modern compost facility in terms of best odor control practice. So there's versions of it at Newby Island landfill, in Milpitas slash San Jose, installed a different version of it. So there's other smaller facilities using this technology successfully. And ECS, our vendor, has dozens and dozens of facilities nationwide, and a very good success with odor controls and, you know, going to distress facilities with problems with their neighbors and coming in and rectifying those issues.
Okay. Tell me a little bit about the, the limits on the amount that you guys can process, and then there's, what was it, twenty days or, or more where you can do a higher, higher rate? Is, is that something, I mean, this is a use permit that runs with the land, but at, at what point will you come back and say, hey, we're, we're getting, this is great, and we've got more and more jurisdictions wanting to utilize this technology? And will you be coming back to us to get higher limits? Or is there, there constraints in the facility and everything else that make those limits that we're putting on here is reasonable for the long term?
Yeah, I think they are reasonable for the long term. I think this is hopefully the last time we will be before you. I think the, what we're proposing now maximizes the effective usefulness of the site, and, you know, the, for reference for the rest of the twenty extra days he's talking about, so a couple of times a year on the, on the yard trimmings, the green waste side, you have your fall leaf drop, and then you have sometimes some surges of material in the spring where we have surges in tonnage where we, normally over the course of the year, averaging, say, City of San Jose averages four or five hundred tons per day for, you know, two to three weeks out of the say, City of San Jose averages 400, 500 tons per day for, you know, two to three weeks out of the year. If they might go to 1,000 tons per day, and we have the big storms, all the leaves come at once, everything's wet. So, the, the 20 days of increased capacity really just relates to those temporary surges that happen. Usually primarily leaf season once a year.
And when I visited, you mentioned there are, there are ways to get permission to go above that using already processes that are in place. If, if you do need to add a day or two on it, there is a mechanism for doing that?
Yeah, there's a, a thing called an emergency waiver of standard, so that's been invoked. So, if there's a lot of debris from, say, a fire, earthquake, disaster, then the LEA, Local Enforcement Agent, see, run through the environmental health, can make a determination that, you know, we can raise the, the daily tonnage limit on a temporary basis to absorb those materials rather than send them to a landfill or some other lesser use.
Back to the, the, the access then, and, and maybe just kind of a general question. How do you, how will you transition? Because you're gonna have to create all these bunkers and everything. So, are, are you, are you still gonna have throughput in, in the old method? And, and you do this kind of in stages? Or is it literally you're just gonna wipe, wipe the place clean, build everything, get it approved, and then hit the ground running?
Uh, no. So, we have to, you know, continue to provide the diversion services that, that we're required to do, and of course, that the, the cities want. So, we have a phased approach. We're gonna open up some areas on other places in the site to temporarily move some of the bags, and I think build it in two phases, John? Two phases. So, our, our hope is to maintain our existing flow through that. And then, once everything's built out, then we can begin accepting additional flows.
All right. That, that's all the questions that, that I had for now. So, anybody else? Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, just, um, explain what colorization is.
Sorry, colorization?
Colorization.
Okay, so, uh, in your yard waste, you have your nice grass and leaves and smaller trimmings that compost nicely, but also, you know, the heavier branches and woodier materials do not compost, and those are what we call overs. So, at the end of the process, we screen those out, and you have a wood chip material. That used to do things like go to hog cogeneration fuel to produce electricity. But that kind of has been phased out over the years. A lot of it, you know, then ends up going as alternative daily cover at landfill. But John Doyle, our operations manager, over the last 10 years has been really innovated, innovative on that, and has developed a, a system to make that into mulches. And so, what part of what we do is re-grind that, and we color it in the red and black and different mulches you would see around the, you know, commercial landscaped areas in your yard. And then, our, our latest and greatest spin on that is green mulch, which could be used as a lawn replacement, looks really nice in, in place of your plastic artificial lawn.
So, and what, I assume that this is completely non-toxic natural materials that are?
Yeah, the dye is food, food-grade dye, so everything's, you know, 100% organic.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Belska, do you have another?
Yeah, I, I guess, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around. When the organic waste goes into the landfill, it produces methane, and that's, you know, that's, that's the thing we're trying to avoid. So, how is it that it doesn't produce methane in this system since it's going to be open to the? Right, it's not in bags?
Yeah, so methane is produced in anaerobic conditions. So, when something is decomposing in the absence of, of oxygen, that produces methane. So, in an anaerobic digestion facility, we burn that methane to make electricity. In a landfill, there is some methane capture, but as we've seen from studies, most of that methane is escaping in, in surface emissions. So, that's really the target of SB 1383, that's kind of triggering this need for additional organic capacity, is that methane escaping from landfills. So, our composting method with oxygen, instead of producing methane, you produce the CO2 is the off-gas, which are much, much less harmful than, than methane. And then, a lot of those emissions also captured and VOC scrubbed through the biofiltration system that Eric had described earlier.
Commissioner Levy, do you have a follow-up?
So, those bags that I got from Home Depot, the mulch came from your facility?
We don't do any bagged product at this point.
Sell them to Scots, and they bag them up for you.
Yeah, we, we have not gotten into that market yet, but anything's possible in the future.
Okay. A question about the bend. So, one of my concerns is, you know, both the flooding from rain events and also, primarily from rain events, both from, you know, potentially hitting the 100-year flood mark, but also seepage from the bends themselves. And I understand it's going into the new pond that's being created. But why is there not any type of rain cover on the bends to prevent, you know, that kind of seepage? The water getting into the compost and seeping out?
It just, it adds a kind of an unnecessary expense. So, everything that we're talking about, the ECS system is on a concrete slab, and there's actually a drainage system that collects that water that's been in contact. So, anything that goes through the compost material and leaches into the drainage channels, then goes into a tank and is aerated and treated to remove the odor. And then, that water is reused again as processed water.
Oh, so the water from that storage facility is gonna be reused as processed water?
Right. And then, anything that runs off from the other area of the sites goes to the large stormwater detention basin that described. That basin is lined, so nothing can leach down into the, into the ground from there. As well as throughout the site, there are monitoring wells that we sample, I think, once or twice a year for the Regional Water Quality Control Board to make sure that nothing is kind of soaking through our, our operations layer, you know, down into the soil.
Great. When I was reading the EIR about, particularly about the detention basins, it seemed that the possibility of those overflowing during the 100-year event, and I don't know how often the 100-year event occurs anymore. I think it's a little more frequent than 100 years because they were, they were built to the 25-year standard. And so, with that water that would, would overflow the detention bank potentially during 100-year event, would that go into that new storage pond?
So, the, the storage pond captures all the runoff from the site. So, it's designed to hold all the stormwater that's come. So, we're, I think, almost doubling the capacity to what exists. And we have made it through the last two fairly heavy winters without a discharge. So, now, we're very confident with this expansion of capacity that as the 100-year storms become more frequent, as you note.
That's right.
We're, we're confident that we can retain all stormwater on site, which is not technically required, but, you know, that's, was our, our design.
Well, the concern is you have the river, you have the repairing corridor, you know, right there next to the facility, and we wouldn't want to see the waste run off into the repairing corridor. So, it's important that we make sure that the water stays on site. And how is that water, you know, is treated? The water that's within that storage pond? You say you recycle that water into?
We use that water back on the site for dust control and processed water throughout the year, and then go into the next winter with it dry and, and ready to go.
It's dry from evaporation?
It evaporates, and then we also?
And, and you process it?
We pump it out and use it on-site.
Yeah, the concern, if you continue to use the water and recycle it into that pond, the pond could get more and more polluted as time goes on. And so, is there, is there anything in place to, you know, clean it on a regular basis? Or to make sure that, that there's not too much, whatever gets left behind from the process? If it flows into that pond, and gets recycled, and it flows in the pond again and again and again, it gets more concentrated?
Not currently something that's kind of on the water board or anybody's radar screen. I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, at this point, that's a fairly standard industry practice, not just in our industry, but across, you know, all industries where, you know, any kind of industrial facilities now, you know, stormwater capture and reuse is kind of the norm. So, we haven't gotten to that next step yet of, of seeing if there's any impacts of concentration.
And a lot of that water evaporates out of the, out of the composting?
Correct.
Because of the heat? Yeah, okay. Are we gonna hear potentially from Representative of the Water Board of Valley Water?
That'd be a question for staff.
Through the chair, I'm not sure if we have Valley Water representatives available tonight, but we do have a number of other representatives, including the Department of Environmental Health and AECOM, our consultant is also?
Caltrans also, or no?
I don't believe Caltrans is here, no. But we have a lot of other subject matter experts who may have the ability to answer some questions.
All right. I, I would, I would love to hear from a subject matter expert concerning any type of risk there is to either the Pahrul River or the groundwater table. But overall, I think, you know, I appreciate what you've said, and it makes a lot of sense. So, thank you.
Any other questions at this time? All right. Well, thank you. And we'll open it up for any members of the, the public that wish to speak at this point.
We have no speakers in chambers, and one moment for hands in the Zoom room. We do have one speaker. Apologies. Jason Redderer is our first speaker. We are unmuting you. Please accept the unmute, and you'll have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Jason Redderer, and I'm speaking on behalf of Torado Leasing, the owner of the 570-acre farm located next door to the Z-Best facility. I submitted a letter yesterday regarding this project, which focuses mainly on what we consider an ongoing deficiencies with the SEQA analysis. We believe this project threatens the long-term viability of the Torado property and its ability to produce food crops. We understand the state mandates that this project's attempting to meet. However, it should not be at the spend, at the expense of prime farmland. The increase in bird activity at the facility due to the exposed composting piles and the exposed detention pond creates the potential for airborne pathogens, which will potentially result in, in more farmland being taken out of production. We urge you to take these concerns seriously and consider requiring the bird control plan that I mentioned in my comment letter as a condition of approval. We also think that a more meaningful analysis of a fully enclosed composting operation is required with the county taking the lead on that analysis as opposed to the applicant that submitted some information about it, including, including the economic infeasibility of it. Finally, the commission's required to make certain findings to approve the use permit, specifically that this project will not be detrimental to the health and safety and welfare. Similarly, similarly, for the architectural and site approval, you need to find that no significant unmitigated adverse public health and safety impacts
through the chair. We may wanna just pause him real quick to figure out technology.
Yeah, you kind of drifted off there, and we weren't able to understand the last couple of sentences.
Oh, okay. I, I was just mentioning the finding that's required for the architectural and site approval, that no significant unmitigated adverse public health and safety impacts will occur from the development. We don't think these findings can be made in light of the significant and unavoidable bioaerosol impacts under the documentation of the EIR. So, we request that keep planning.
All right, thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
All right. With that, I'll close the public comment. I, I do have a couple of questions for staff. In the process of, if we were to approve this, the road improvements that are suggested, there's, there's two, two options. And my concern is, this sounds like a, a win-win for the, the county to get this going and, and get the throughput and everything and keep the stuff out of our landfill. So, do our conditions of approval in any way create a situation where, where the road access delays us from being able to transition to the new processes? Does, does that make sense?
Yes. So, the condition requires, or its mitigation measure requires the traffic improvements, so the driveway or, or entrance exit improvements be made before there's an increase in volume of material that's being delivered, that's being processed at the facility. So, if they want to implement the new system but not increase the amount of truck traffic coming to the facility, I suppose they could do that. But they cannot increase the amount of truck traffic until the driveway improvements are made.
So, I, I would?
Sorry, I could just add on briefly. The reason that we structured the mitigation measure to allow either the relocation of the driveway with additional safety improvements and a traffic signal, or keeping the driveway in its current location but with additional safety improvements is because we don't know specifically what Caltrans will permit. And so, actually structuring the mitigation measure to allow either/or will hopefully ensure that one of those options is approved by Caltrans so that we can avoid a situation where we say, you have to do this, and then they go to Caltrans, and Caltrans says, we can't permit this. So, hopefully, that will actually prevent delays in getting the project, you know, up and running.
Okay. And my, my concern is, if, if all the new traffic is non-peak hours, why do we care? If they're coming in the middle of the night, let them come. Why, why do we have to say no extra input until all, all the bureaucratic boxes get checked and everything? So, that's a big, big concern of mine.
Yep. A, a large number of the traffic accidents are at nighttime. So, that was a big part of the reason for the elimination of the, of that intersection or of the driveway, State Route 25 intersection is to help address the nighttime accidents.
If I may, when you're speaking, before you speak, would you please identify yourselves?
Yes.
Thank you.
How many, how many accidents do we have in that area? Is that an issue right now?
Yes, Chair, this is Emmanuel Ursu speaking. We can take a look at the traffic appendix to the EIR and dig that information up. It'll take a few minutes.
Okay. And then?
This is Scott with AECOM. I could speak to that. They, in the study of that, there were 21 injury crashes that was at both of those intersections, including a fatality that was at the driveway, which was a nighttime fatality.
Okay. And, and that was in, in the vicinity of this facility here, those statistics?
Yes, just right, both of the T intersections, so both at Bolsa Road and the driveway, and then any crashes that were in between the two. So, it's about a 500-foot section.
Okay.
Had those crashes.
If, if I could have staff also respond to the SEQA allegations of the, whether or not this stuff was, is covered, the, the bird vector and everything? And is staff aware of any other facilities that are enclosed? Or most of these all open, using this technology?
I'll let others respond to the, whether there are other open facilities. But just in terms of the SEQA allegations in the letter, they also submitted a letter on the original draft EIR, which we then, you know, significantly revised the draft EIR and the recirculated EIR, including to address specifically some of the concerns that they raised about bioaerosols and other issues. They then submitted a comment letter on the recirculated draft EIR, which I would point you to the final EIR where we responded to each of these allegations. The letter they submitted yesterday kind of repeats the, the issues that we have, believe we have already addressed and responded to in the final EIR.
And for the record, it's Elizabeth Visser with County Council.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And you are?
Good, good call. I'm Lisa McCall, Deputy Director of Planning.
Sorry. Any other? Any other questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Belska?
Yeah, and maybe just a little more clarification. So, there are other facilities that use this technology that are not covered or not enclosed, correct? Or in existence, let's say in existence. There are such facilities already in existence which are not enclosed, which means from those facilities, we should have good data indicating whether it does attract birds or doesn't. Do we have such data?
Emmanuel Ursu. I am aware of other facilities, I saw them online in researching this, that are, that use this technology, that are not enclosed or covered. I don't know if there's data that shows or speaks to the concerns of the neighbor though.
Legal counsel?
Yeah, my understanding is that...
You are?
Lizanne Reynolds. I have a nameplate. My understanding, and the applicant can, you know, may want to chime in on this, is that because these piles are covered with kind of what's a mulch, that the stuff underneath that's being composted is not, like, readily accessible to the birds. I mean, you know, there are birds around the facility, yes, that's true. There's also a buffer zone for the organizations that buy food from the farmers have required clear zones between composting facilities and actively farmed, you know, vegetables and other row crops. So, a lot of the farmland around, not a huge amount, but there is a, you'll see a lot of vacant farmland around the facility. We evaluated with AECOM, evaluated those clear zones. There are no regulations by the state or the federal government about these issues. But the people who purchase these products do have these set zones, and those are all being complied with, which is our understanding. So, that should mitigate any, you know, bioaerosols that might... The bioaerosols, I'll just say, are things that are ubiquitous in the air anyway. They can just be at slightly elevated concentrations around a composting facility. So, it's not like they're new things that are being introduced to the air. They're just perhaps an increased concentration. And there is a very robust, our AECOM did a spectacular job on this analysis, and it's attached, it's an attachment to the EIR. And it's also fascinating, I mean, maybe I'm kind of a geek, but it's really well done, and I would strongly encourage you to read that if you haven't already. But we do feel like we've addressed all of those very robustly in the EIR itself, as well as the responses to the comments that we did.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Belska?
Yeah, no, on the bioaerosols, I got that. No, I guess, I guess on the bird issue, it seems like there isn't a lot of data, but it seems like it should be pretty easy to actually generate that data, right? You go to a facility that has this technology, you count the birds per square meter. You go to a facility that's covered or that's using the existing technology, you count the birds per square meter, and you compare the two, and then you can have a concrete data that shows, you know, it does or does not contribute.
Yeah, it's really, it's the bird poop, not the birds, so...
Well, but the more the birds you have, the more...
True. But like I said, you do have this clear zone around the facility where there aren't, you know, crops being grown. So, that's, you know, you would think that there would be a lot more of this data out there, but AECOM did, I did my own research, and there are a lot more composting facilities in Europe. And I don't remember seeing any bird issues. It was really focusing on the bioaerosols issue. Nobody really talks about bird issues there. I think the other thing is, is that the covered facility is so cost prohibitive that it's just even, yeah, it's just not even feasible. And I just will note that there was a speaker who requested that the county do an independent analysis. AECOM did a very thorough analysis of that cost estimate, so it's not like we just accepted what the applicant provided. We did a very thorough peer review of that.
Any other questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Levy, do you...
No, I think I'm ready for motion.
Move the process along?
Yeah, I do. I think I'm actually very excited about this project. I think diverting the, you know, bio-waste to, you know, from the landfills and reducing methane is fantastic, and I think it's a great proposal. And I also want to, you know, let staff know how we appreciate the EIR process. I think this is one of the better EIR processes I've seen, where the input that we've seen from the various agencies and so forth got incorporated into the document. It improved the project, both from a transportation and circulation perspective and hydrology perspective. So, I think the process went very well. I think that's a, it's a good project. The process went well, so I'd like to move it forward. And so, with that, I'll make a motion that we certify the final environmental impact report, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and make required findings pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, including adoption of a statement of overriding consideration. Grant the concurrent land use applications consisting of a use permit, architecture and site approval, and grading approval for upgrade of the existing municipal solid waste MSW composting process to a covered, a aerated static pile process to increase throughput of MSW subject to conditions of approval. One comment about the covering of the facility. I think that the covering facility, besides being cost prohibitive, would also introduce a nightmare from an environmental health perspective in that you'd have these covered facilities and composting piles being, you know, the aeration being trapped in this facility. It would be a completely different project. It would probably make it cost prohibited. And what we want to do is see this move forward so we can reduce the bio-waste that's going to landfills, so.
All right, and I will second that motion. Is there any other comments from commission members? All right. And I'd also like to say thank you to the staff for all the work that was done. This is, and to the applicant, this is exciting for our county, so I'm proud. So, do I need to restate the motion?
You might, the applicant had some rebuttal time. I don't know if they want to exercise that or just rest on what they've already said. Oh, he's waving.
Okay. So, we have a motion to certify the final EIR, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and make required findings pursuant to CEQA, including adoption of a statement of overriding considerations. Grant major modification of the concurrent land use application consisting of a use permit, architectural and site approval, and grading approval to upgrade the existing MSW composting process to a covered aerated static pile process and increase throughput of MSW subject to conditions of approval, made by Commissioner Levy and seconded by yours truly. I just wanted to sound very technical, so that I had to do that, so, thank you. With that, can we take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Escobar?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Rouser?
I approve.
Vice Chairperson Belska?
Approve.
Do we have any statements that we need to read on this one? No, okay.
Yes, the project is appealable. We typically...
Anybody who wants to appeal has 15 days to file an appeal with the Planning Department?
And you are?
Lizanne Reynolds, Lead Deputy County Counsel.
She knows what she's talking about. All right, congratulations. So, with that, I'd like to move to...
Chair, I just want to, I want to thank real quick all of the staff who participated and came here this evening as well.
And all those who are leaving, Darryl Wong, Tyson Green. Let me see, I'm sure I'm going to miss a few, but we had some extra...
Brad Vodula, Brad Fox.
Well, Brad Awash and Brad Fox. And I think Environmental Health, Jeff?
Jeff, over here.
He's right here.
Oh, okay, hi Jeff. And then who's the gentleman in the back there? What's your name? Yeah.
I'm AJ.
AJ.
Solid Waste, LA.
Okay, AJ with Solid Waste. Thank you, Jay Moore.
And I'd like to thank our experts at AECOM, Emma Ronzley, who was our lead project manager, and all they, we needed so many unusual experts here, and they just reached out to their folks, and I've been really impressed working with them.
And all of the staff, Elizabeth Visser and Valerie Negrete and Rob Salisbury, and also the gentleman from, I'm just forgetting your name, from Imgru.
Emmanuel.
Emmanuel Ursu.
Emmanuel Ursd, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
We've worked very closely with ZBES. It was one of the projects that I was introduced to when I came, and so, thank you for working with us. We don't always get a collaborative applicant, but we had one in this particular case.
Badge of honor. Nice. And that was Director Onchano with those comments. Okay, I'd like to move to item seven. We have a certificate of appreciation to give to Commissioner Vicki Moore for her service on the Planning Commission, and I would like to read it.
And through the chair, once we read this, we will all step down real quick and take a nice photo that Peggy will take for us.
So, in the past, we have tried to read this all in one breath, but I'm not going to do that. Whereas, Vicki Moore was appointed to the Santa Clara County Planning Commission on August 29, 2017, and served for seven years as the District Five Commissioner, served as the vice chairperson of the Planning Commission from July 2020 through August 2021, and served as chairperson to the Planning Commission from September 2021 through July 2022. And whereas, Ms. Moore is a longstanding community volunteer in Santa Clara County, including among her many accomplishments, serving as a community-at-large member on the General Plan Review Advisory Committee in the 1990s and work on the county's groundbreaking general plan to ensure one managed and balanced growth to livable communities, number three, responsible resource conservation, and number four, social and economic well-being. And whereas, Ms. Moore, acting out of a personal commitment to the future well-being of Santa Clara County, invested hundreds of hours of personal time supporting the work of the Planning Commission, and is valued for her experience, knowledge, independence, and unwavering commitment to balancing the aspects of private development with the perspectives of various stakeholders and the intent of the county's founding principles, policies, and goals of the general plan. And whereas, Ms. Moore's balanced and practical approach to complex issues, combined with her strong sense of community, were relied upon by her fellow commissioners and contributed to the effectiveness of the Planning Commission. And whereas, Ms. Moore's passion for environmental education and dedication to serving the community is unwavering, as she also founded Living Classroom to inspire students to learn and value nature through garden-based education. And whereas, Ms. Moore's influence and legacy will live on through her contributions to the Planning Commission, including consideration of several general plan and zoning ordinance amendments relating to agricultural employee housing, industrial hemp facilities, Santa Clara Valley agricultural plan, new accessory dwelling unit requirements, Stanford University and the Stanford Community Plan, the county housing element update, and numerous other project approvals. Now, therefore be it certified on the 27th day of June 2024 that the Santa Clara County Planning Commission and the Department of Planning and Development are deeply grateful for and thankful to Vicki Moore for her dedication to the public interest, her contribution to the community, and her years of service to Santa Clara County. So, as acting chairperson, I also want to say I've learned a lot from you, and I really appreciate the time that we were able to spend together on this. And you definitely bring a very unique perspective. Sometimes, we have different solutions to problems, but you've always been very respectful, and I've learned a lot from you. And I rank you in the high tier of commissioners that I think really provided value-add to our county. So, I just personally want to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I just, I did want to say just a couple of things before the picture, but that, you know, just, it really has been an honor to serve on the commission. And I really believe in the importance of planning for quality of life, for sustainability, for our environment, and so many other elements that make our community what it is today. And I just want to thank this planning staff, Director Onchano, Deputy Director and Planning Secretary, Lisa McHale, Rob Salisbury, Valerie Negrete, who was here today, Lizanne Reynolds. Very, very professional, always. You made our job easy. This latest project was a great example of the thoroughness. And I just want to thank you very much for that. And to my fellow commissioners, particularly those here who I've served for quite a few years with, with Mark and Amy and Bob. And again, it's, it has been an honor. And I, by leaving the commission, by the way, doesn't mean that I'm not still going to pay attention to what's going on. So, you might still see me, but just over there. Thank you.
If I may, as the director, I just want to say thank you. And you have been, you pay attention to detail, but more so, you have pushed our staff to be excellent, and you have been kind in doing that. And we appreciate your respect for us and for yourself, and just the display of professionalism that you have shown. It's a lost art to be able to help staff. We have a very young staff, but you have been just a wonderful commissioner for us. And a resident of this county, we have been honored to serve and to work alongside of you. We just really do appreciate you and the quality of who you are. So, we just wanted to say thank you, and we just have some flowers for you.
Are there any members of the public or anything that have wanted to speak on this?
We do not have any speakers on the item.
Shall we take the picture now, and then...
Through the chair, Lisa McHale, Deputy Director, yes.
And Peggy will do the honors.
Okay, I'm not going to be in this, because I got to... You have no idea what I will...
Would you like...
Yeah, because she couldn't...
Director Onchano?
I had the locker in the shop, because I have to go back and watch. One, two, three. Another one. One, two, three. Okay, can I go down? Yes. Oh, my gosh. Yeah. We're not allowed.
Oh, really? Well, this is, I think this is leftover from...
The door. Thank you.
Okay, we will not hear the report from the chairperson. I do not have any report to give. Do any commissioners have reports? Do any commissioners have reports? Nope, seeing none, we'll move on. Does county council have a report?
No report. From Lizanne Reynolds, lead deputy county council.
Does the Planning Commission Secretary have a report?
Lisa Macyle, Deputy Director. I, I do have a report under the Deputy Director, but I'll just go ahead and do both.
All right.
Sure, that's fine. We did resubmit the, we are, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. Our housing element update has recently been reposted as required under the law for seven days. And we will be submitting that to the State Department of Housing and Community Development on Friday. So this will be our third submittal for review. We've been working diligently with the HCD staff. We're hopeful, they've noted it does tend to take four, four tries, but we're still hopeful. So that's the current status. We're also under recruitment right now for senior planners in the department. There's three open positions. We understand we will also likely be adding another fourth position through board action coming down the line in July. And we're also recruiting for another principal planner.
Any update on code enforcement manager?
No, we're still trying. The director, when she comes back, may have an update there. I believe that the recruitment is pending, there's a list. Jack, the question under your report may be the status of the code enforcement manager recruitment.
Sorry, question, follow-up question if I may.
Commissioner Belska?
Thank you. So the, the, the report, is the version that's on the website now different from the one that this body approved previously?
It is, yes. So these are responses to HCD's comments. And so what the department is doing is going back and forth between HCD and staff. And once we get to the point of at least them alluding to certification, we will come back before the Planning Commission to re-recommend adoption to the board, and then the board will re-adopt.
Are the, are there comments and a red line version available on the website?
Yes, I believe staff was putting up a track change red line version online. I'll triple check with them next.
And then the HCD comments are available there as well?
I don't know if the HCD comments are available. I'd have to double check.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, just, they are a matter of public record, however, so if, if any member of the public or the commission would like to see them and they're not online, we can certainly provide those.
Lisa, thank you for the update. Couple of questions, do we have any type of timeline? Do you have sort of a guess of when we're going to get this approved? And finally, are, we are still open to builders remedies until HCD approves it? And are we seeing much in the way of builders remedy projects coming in?
A couple responses there.
Yeah, I think there's three questions in there.
Sure. In terms of timeline, the, the HCD under the law has 60 days to respond to those comments. We're hopeful, again, that that would, they would indicate certification. So if they indicate certification, then we move down the track pretty quickly to come back to the Planning Commission and the board at an expeditious, expeditious rate. So, but we don't know. I don't have an answer until we know more from HCD. In terms of the position of builders remedy applications, you are correct, until there is a certific, certified housing element by HCD, we are continuing to accept SB 330 builders remedy applications.
And have we seen many?
We have, and we have a list that's available online.
Yeah, I saw the list before, I just wondered if it's continuing to grow.
The numbers increasing every other day, so it is online and we, we try to maintain that list about every week, week and a half to update it.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll keep my eye open for it.
I'd like to just go back to item eight, report from the chairperson. So I did attend the SIMPAC meeting yesterday and they had another very fine presentation from LAFCO and a little bit of training on their bylaws and different, different stuff like that. And then they had an ad hoc committee to look over the San Martin guidelines and they put a report out. They're going to give a letter to the staff, kind of with their findings, and they voted to disband that particular ad hoc group, so. Can I just ask, why isn't that on the, on the agenda or is that because nothing actually came to us, is that, is that pretty much?
That's correct. And, and it's actually my fault. I do have notes here to report out for SIMPAC and I, I failed to do so. You, you did just provide the report out. But if there's not an item that's coming before the Planning Commission as a recommending body or as an approving body on a project that's subject to the San Martin planning area, it's not an agendized item. So there's no requirement to report out.
I understand. Received report from the Director, Department of Planning and Development?
Thank you. So when I went for my bio break, I understand there was a question about code enforcement program manager. And we have received 10 applicants. And so we are preparing for those interviews. We'll probably have a pan, three different panels because we're really searching to have the best candidate. This is the fourth, this will be the third recruitment for this position that we have conducted, third or fourth, I think. And so we're hopeful, but we have to find the right candidate for the position, the right person.
That's Director Anshano.
Yeah, that's Director Anshano. And the other item I'll just speak to, we are at a 15.9% vacancy rate still within the department across all of our divisions. And so we are, as in, we did just significant, we just filled a significant position, not just, but the executive team is now complete. If you're not aware, we have three deputy director positions that we are now, that are now filled. Lisa Macyle holds one, is planning services. Michael Alvarez, you might be aware of who he is, he holds the deputy director and he's our building official for the county over development services. And then we have Stuart Petrie, who is our deputy director over administration. And he has a very strong background in fiscal and our finance. And he oversees all of our fiscal, all of our admin, our GIS team. So we, we're, we're coming, we're getting a really good foundation. What we are hoping to do is fill our vacancies and get to a place where we're stable and we can be more responsive on the processing of these projects. We're working with consultants also to address some of the backlog, both in code enforcement and in our development services. So we are probably weekly having interviews. And as you know, we're always hopeful, but this is a very expensive county to live in. And that has been some of the struggle. When people accept the position, we've actually had four positions where people accepted them and then backed out.
Reality hit, boom.
Yeah, we've had four positions where we've, we've had two different panels, we did all of the due diligence, made offers, and they came. And so it's a very expensive county, but we're hopeful and we continue to plod forward.
All right, that's your, that's your report, very good.
That's the report.
Do we just have any sense of next month's meeting? Is, does it look like we will have something on the agenda or, I don't need a commitment just?
Next month.
My, my apology. Lisa Macyle, Deputy Director. We do not have items for the July meeting. We will have, right now, about three items for the August meeting.
Okay. Does legal counsel want a vacation? Is that, is that the? And they need to redo this, this room, right? And update the air conditioning system?
July, the, our, the board is gone in July, so that's when we get to catch up on all the things we didn't have time to work on.
All right, number 14, we received correspondence. Is that true that there are currently no vacancies on the commission?
That is correct. There will be a vacancy at the end of this month, and District Five is working on that. And we do have a new appointee, Jean Cohen, who was not able to attend this meeting. She had a scheduling conflict before the appointment, but she will be here in August.
All right, and.
Could you turn your mic on, Commissioner Escobar? Thank you.
Yeah, I do know Jean Cohen. I worked with her on the Board of Supes. When I worked for Pete McQ for D3, she worked for Jim Bell. She came in a few years after me, and so I've known her ever since and sat on boards with her, too. Yeah, she's good people. Yeah, she'll be good.
Commissioner Belska?
Yeah, sorry, just going back to the, the agenda for July, were we not required to have a 90-day update on the Waters project, which would fall on Jul, on the July meeting?
Yeah, but, but if there's no, no progress on that, then it would just go to the next meeting that we have. So I don't know that it's worth having a whole meeting.
So, so we were required to have a 90, every 90 days, an update on the status of the Waters project? And if we don't have a meeting in July, would, would we just get emailed an update or?
We can do that in August.
Okay.
Lisa Macyle, Deputy Director.
Yeah, I was just. I have 15 approved, the minutes, we did the consent calendar, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm not sure why that's there. Number 16, I would like to adjourn this meeting, possibly to the next regular meeting schedule for Thursday, July 25th, 2024.
No, through the chair, it will, it will be canceled.
It will be canceled. And so we will have elections at the next meeting for a new chairperson and vice chairperson. That's my understanding, right?
Correct.
And with that, I adjourn. Thank you, Commissioner Belska, for hanging in there.